Teresa, I just want to confirm one more time that you're here for closed captioning. Is that correct? I think it's Gabe. Gabe's doing the ASL. I've got two interpreters here, so sometimes we have none. Tonight, we have two.
Lauren will be joining us shortly.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Jen, are you all set with your question about closed captioning?
Yep, we're all set whenever you're ready.
Okay. So it looks like it is 6:30. I'd like to call the Norton School Committee meeting for December 3rd to order. Hi, everybody. I hope everybody had a nice relaxing holiday last week. I think we all needed a day off, a kind of a regroup day. So maybe we can start tonight with a vote to approve the minutes of the November 12, 2020 meeting and also the minutes for the executive session meeting. Is there any questions, comments? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the November 12, 2020 open meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, Dinesh?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And I am a yes. And then is there a motion to approve the minutes for the executive session meeting that met on November 12, 2020?
So moved.
So moved.
Second? All in favor, Sherry?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thanks, everyone. Sherry, warrants?
I have reviewed and approved the following warrants, school expense warrants, November 13, 2020, $423,957.25. November 20, 2020, $214,506.79. And school payroll warrant, November 5, 2020, $984,947.84. And November 19, 2020, $971,496.93. I wish to enter them into public record.
Thank you, Sherry. Student representative updates. My screen looks like so many faces, so I'm trying to find Malia and Zoe. You're both here, right? Hi. We'll turn it over to you.
Me and Zoe are both here, so. So we're going to start with the elementary schools. So with the LGN, the LGN has a few events coming this December. First, Santa's Parade will be this Saturday, the 5th, if weather permits. The parade is cosponsored by the LGN, PTC, and Norton Parks and Rec. Virtual parent-teacher conferences will take place the week of the 14th. And lastly, the music teacher, Mr. Place, will be hosting a virtual sing-along for both the JCS and the LGN on the 21st. For the JCS, they've been having fun with lots of fall and Thanksgiving activities, and during the last couple of weeks, they continue to do their story walks and enjoy outside wellness classes. Finally, their wonderful SPO treated staff to a luncheon the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. And Zoe will provide the update for the yell.
There's a lot going on for the yell. They are going to have Spirit Week where they have days like Crazy Socks Day, Holiday Sweater, PJs, just a few fun things for the kids to do. Mr. G interviewed fifth-grade students this week to see how they're doing on the school year. And they like being able to be in person. They feel like they learn better when they're in person because they get those in-person activities. But they also like that when they're at home, they have their own schedule, and it's a little more, I feel, older. But they like that when they're in person, they can prepare for their at-home, so it's a good balance. They also like how they can see the whole class on Remote Monday with both cohorts together. But they wish they could share more equipment in like music class or gym class, all that stuff. But it's going pretty well for them so far. Malia, you have the middle school?
So prior to Thanksgiving, NMS participated in two student-run acts of community support and outreach. So first, they had a Wear Pink Spirit Day for both cohorts in support of those affected with breast cancer. All staff and students were invited to write positive messages on pink sticky notes. They were able to fill the whole bulletin board, making for a very powerful visual. Second, they had the continuation of NMS's annual Thankful Turkey in the Rotunda, composed of hundreds of colorful paper feathers, where staff and students write what they're thankful to. The completed turkey serves as a powerful reminder of how much we have to be thankful for this time of year. And I'll turn it over to Zoe for the high school.
So the high school also just got over with the Spirit Week where we had our class competitions. It's kind of sad that not many people participated, but it's still at least something to do. We had fun that before Thanksgiving break, the Kindness Club and a few other teachers celebrated us finishing term one, and we had a big celebration-type thing as we walked into school. They also had a book club with David Crowe on his paleface lie. Ash got to do that with them, and that was pretty cool to listen to. So we get thanks to Ms. Burket for setting that up. And then we also, Mr. Dolman wanted to say congratulations to the Tri Valley League All-Stars for all the students who got the All-Stars for the sports that they had respecting to them. So it's been pretty good so far in high school.
Thanks, Malia. Thanks, Zoe. It's really nice. I think we're all probably learning how to be a little bit more creative to sort of celebrate traditions, or I think for a lot of schools, there are a lot of kind of events that happen that have become sort of a tradition for a school. So maybe it's going to look a little different, but it's nice to see that schools are still really trying to allow children the opportunity to really experience those social events a little differently than they used to, but really fun nonetheless. So any other comments or questions? Seeing none. Thanks, Malia. Thanks, Zoe. We're going to move on to the Student Excellence Awards. Dr. Bayetta?
Evening, everyone. Hope everyone's healthy and doing well, and welcome back. Tonight is probably one of the funnest nights for me as superintendent every year. I probably say that every year because I get to announce and recognize four students from Norton High School as students who have excelled in so many different ways. And every year, this gets more and more difficult as the students are more and more diverse in their backgrounds and what they're trying to attempt and do, and who they want to be, and how much they bring to our school. So tonight, we're recognizing four seniors, two each, two for the National School Development Council Academic Growth and Student Leadership in Learning Award. One student, the Superintendent Award of Excellence, and one student, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, School Superintendent Certificate of Academic Excellence. The process that we've utilized is about the combination of the requirements of each of the awards, as well as working through Principal Dolman, who I believe is on with us tonight, who basically works with folks and comes up with the recommendations for the awards. I want to thank him and his staff for working on this and making these recommendations. I was able to meet with these four students via Zoom about a week, a week and a half ago. I think it was the week of Thanksgiving, if I remember correctly. They're four outstanding young people. And I think one of the things that I continue to see in Norton in general, but especially during this pandemic, is how much this generation is much more about us than me. I've said this before, both publicly and privately. I wish we were more like them as adults because they have this deep commitment to each other, and just by how they talk about things. And maybe that's part of being COVID, but I also think it's just part of who they are and their upbringing and support around them, not only from teachers, all the way from preschool through high school, but their families. So tonight, I'd also like to recognize each of their families for supporting their children and also for taking a chance on Norton Public Schools and Norton High School. And I think that speaks volumes to all of them. So the first award goes to the National School Development Council Academic Growth and Student Leadership in Learning goes to Manetza Cota Ortiz. She's in the process of completing a challenging program and has taken a multitude of honors and advanced placement courses. She's been able to maintain a 4.01 GPA. You're all going to hear this. I never came close to a four. Manetza's academic success has allowed her to be an active member of the Spanish, English, History Triumph and National Honor Societies. She has earned a multitude of awards during her time in Norton High School, including AP Scholar, Presidential Math, and Seal of Bileiteracy. She has consistently demonstrated her leadership capabilities through the NHS Drama Club, GCC, and the Superintendent Student Leadership Board. She is also the founder and organizer for the Wheaton Entrepreneurship Seminar at Norton High School. Her involvement and organization of these activities created multiple learning opportunities for her peers and created an important connection to the Norton community. Tonight, I'd like to recognize for the National School Development Council Academic Growth and Student Leadership in Learning Award to Manetza Cota Ortiz. She is somewhere on this screen, I hope.
Thank you so much.
Oh, there you are, family in the background. Good to see everybody. She's a fantastic young lady. I've gotten to know her a little bit because of the advisory, and I can tell you that the commitment she made to bringing Wheaton with that entrepreneurial program is something that we hope to continue, become our, something that we do annually. It's something that doesn't happen anywhere else except a place where a young lady like her brought it forward. So congratulations and thank you for being you.
Thank you.
So here's the key. You know I was going to put you on the spot, so everybody get ready. Where are we applying to?
I'm applying to Harvard, Cornell, UPenn, Northeastern, Syracuse, Penn State, UMass Boston. And I think that's pretty much it.
Probably got rejection letters from those places. Just kidding. Good luck with those. Those are fantastic. By the way, to the school committee and the public, this is a group of four people who are all really committed and looked at reaching at schools. And constantly, you know, I talk to the kids about this, and this is a group that really says, yep, I'm going for it. So that's just one list. The list continues. So congratulations. Next, I'd like to, and there is, by the way, a wonderful, nice certificate that will be coming your way at some point. We'll get it in the mail. I just signed it tonight, so it'll be just for you. The next award is also the Second National School Development Council Academic Growth and Student Leadership Learning Award to Caitlin Bailey. Caitlin is in the process of completing a very challenging program and has maintained a 4.1 GPA. She has challenged herself with a multitude of honors and AP courses and has excelled in each. Caitlin's success has allowed her to become a member of the National History and English Honor Societies and was the Student Government Day Speech winner, Wheaton College Global Leader Scholarship recipient, and the Frederick Douglass and Susan B. Anthony Leadership and Community Action Award recipient. She has demonstrated her leadership qualities through her roles as student council president and historian and debate president. She is dependable and accomplished, but very humble. What a great line. Congratulations to Caitlin Bailey. Where is Caitlin? I got to find her on the screen somewhere.
Hi, thank you.
There you are. Congratulations. Congratulations to the family in the background. She's fantastic. And Caitlin, I'll put you on the spot as well. Where are we applying?
BC and Northeastern are my main ones.
Fantastic. And what are we going to major in?
I'm thinking Journalism with like a minor in Political Science.
Fantastic. Can't wait to vote for you. We need some good candidates out there.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that very much. And congratulations. You're fantastic. The next award tonight goes to, is the Superintendent's Award. Since I've been superintendent now for 12 years, and since the first day I became superintendent in my last district, I wanted to recognize from myself as a superintendent through the principal's office as student for certain attributes that I felt are important. Most of them related around a student who's a doer and wants to get things done, and also maintains those fantastic traits, which all four of them have. In particular, tonight, we're recognizing Madeline Dolak. She is in the process of completing a highly rigorous program, has maintained a 4.6 GPA. She is currently ranked number two in her graduating class. She has challenged herself with a multitude of honors and AP courses and has excelled in every single one. Madeline's success has allowed her to earn high honors throughout her high school career. She's also the secretary of the French Honor Society. Bonjour. Madeline has won a number of academic awards, Academic Excellence in English, Science, Math, Art, and Technology, specifically woodworking from 2017-18. Academic Excellence in English and French, as well as Academic Excellence in French and Science 2020. Madeline has consistently demonstrated outstanding qualities as a leader and as a member of numerous different societies, sports activities, including track and field team as a co-catechist at St. Mary's Church, and as a member and mentor in the Girl Scouts. She has taken part in numerous community service projects and also has had experiences teaching and mentoring the youth of Norton community through her participation in the catechist at St. Mary's Church and her opportunity to lead a younger Brownie troop. Congratulations this evening to Madeline Dolak.
Thank you.
You are. Ellen, congratulations to you and your family for this recognition and your hard work, and to your family as well. And tell us a little bit about some of the places you're looking at.
Well, we're looking at Brown, Amherst, UMass Amherst, Tufts, BC, UMass Dartmouth, University of Vermont.
Once again, I keep saying fantastic opportunities. And what are you thinking of majoring in?
I don't know, but probably Chemistry.
I don't know, but maybe Chemistry. That would have been exactly what I wouldn't have said. Wouldn't have been Chemistry for me, but fantastic field for you to go into as well. Manetza, can you come back on again if you still want, and just tell us about what you're majoring in? Because I forgot to ask if you were thinking about majoring in a specific area.
I'm looking to major in either Poli sci or International Relations on a pre-law track.
So I now have two potential good candidates to vote for in the future because there aren't a lot of good ones out there. So can't wait. Thank you for sharing that. I'm sorry. I forgot earlier. And last but not least, the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent Certificate of Academic Excellence. This award this evening goes to Kevin Mahoney. Kevin always puts forth incredible effort in his academics that makes schoolwork a priority. This is demonstrated through his impressive GPA and consistent high honor roll status, but also through his dedication to his learning and school community. He's a proud member of six academic honor societies. This past spring, Kevin was also awarded the Resley Medal for his high achieving math and science performance. He also won the Voice of Democracy essay contest at the district level in addition to numerous awards of excellence in academic and music over the years. He continues to challenge himself in his senior year with a demanding course load that includes five AP courses, despite the challenges faced due to the COVID-19 crisis and remote learning. You must be kidding me. Five AP classes. In addition to being an absolute pleasure in the classroom, Kevin is a valuable asset to the school athletic teams. He's a varsity athlete on the school's track, wrestling, and cross-country teams. He's a leader in the school's band and jazz club and participant in Best Buddies and Global Citizens. He works two jobs as a line cook and a maid on a local fishing boat. He even finds time to volunteer performing at local nursing homes, the town's Founder's Day event, back-to-school nights, and more. His ability to organize his time and remain actively engaged in so many projects is remarkable. Even though he has a wide range of activities, his style still shines through. He has shown incredible leadership by participating in the Wheaton College Leadership Conference over the past two years, Special Olympics, and tutoring his fellow wrestlers when they need help. In the future, Kevin would like to explore different careers, was at his interest in aviation and mathematics. He's also excited about attending college where he can play club sports and continue playing music. He's an incredibly ambitious, eager, and intellectually curious student. He is kind and approachable and will go on to do amazing things in the future. Congratulations. This year's recipient of the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent Certificate of Academic Excellence to Kevin Mahoney.
Thank you very much.
Why you, sir?
I'm great. Thanks.
Congratulations to you and the family. I know at least one family member. And this is awesome. Thank you so much. And again, I think you said something about aviation, mathematics, but what kind of schools are you looking at?
Well, I'm looking at Rensselaer, Purdue, Dartmouth, maybe Cornell.
Fantastic. Ladies and gentlemen, these are four fantastic students and even student athletes. But I truly just want to thank the staff of Norton Public Schools that have been involved with students at some point or another. It hasn't, in most cases, just been high school, but it's been from the beginning. So thank you to all of them for their support, and thank you to the families for choosing Lancer Nation and for being part of our small, little Lancy community that does really good things with really great kids. And thanks again. Really appreciate it. It's always the best night in the world for me to be able to celebrate great kids.
So on behalf of Norton Public Schools, I just want to also sort of reiterate the extreme excitement and happiness we have for all of you. It's so impressive to see students in the midst of crisis and trauma, really, continue to stay focused and work really hard. You're an impressive group of students, and we wish you all the best. It will be so exciting when those acceptance letters start coming. So fingers crossed that all works out according to your plan. Any other comments?
I just want to say congratulations to all of them, and this is one of those nights that we're so happy to actually be at a meeting so that we can congratulate these kids on all of their hard work and to show them that it really, if you put in the work, the good things come to you. So congratulations to all.
Same, Carol. I just want to say congratulations to all of you in the midst of a pandemic. When people's worlds are turned upside down, it is just awesome to be able to celebrate, you know, you kids and your accomplishments. So great job, and we look forward to hearing more about what you guys do in the future.
Congratulations again. Thanks for joining us tonight. I am going to turn it over to Katie Conway, who is here from the NEED organization to talk about the grant, to announce the grants recipients.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm actually super lucky because I managed to convince the teachers to come talk about their grants. So I just get to do the fun part, which is say that we were able to give out $12,000 to three grants, three really exciting grants, to teachers from the middle school, JCS and LGN. So there's three exciting projects that are about to happen, and that will affect lots of students positively. So we're really excited about that, and I'm happy that we were able to help make that happen. So Christina Bouchard, do you want to go first?
Sure can. Hi, everybody. Thank you very much. So I applied for a premium board with the help of Karen Winstorf to just improve my tech in the classroom. I teach math, seventh-grade math at Norton Middle School. So this is a fully interactive board that can be moved around the room. The elementary schools actually already have it. So we piloted a few years back with Chris Cummings when he was here, and Kendra Hart has it now, who has offered to teach me how to use it. So we're super excited to use it in the classroom with the better technology now. And hopefully, it'll be coming in soon. We ordered it last week, and I'm just so grateful. Thank you. It's amazing. I'm really excited that I got it. So thank you very much.
That's awesome. Thank you. And then we had a story walks grant for JCS and LGN. If somebody wants to talk about that one?
Sure. This is Amanda Whedon from the JCS. I am one of the kindergarten teachers there. The team was great to put together this grant, and we're very appreciative for the NEED organization. I live in Rhode Island, but I take my boys to different libraries every other week, and story walks are something that we've enjoyed and experienced. And it's just a great way to go outdoors and enjoy a story together as you're walking around and kind of increasing your social, emotional learning. So we're very appreciative, Kate, for all of your support. Jen and Rachel, did you want to add some more to that?
Yes. I, of course, love this idea as the reading specialist there. Other than the great benefits, you know, pandemic-wise of being outside, beyond that, there are just a lot of literacy great touchpoints with the books that were ordered and chosen. And it has a really, really strong supportive structure to be outside, to really learn on your feet, to walk a story with its retelling and summarizing from beginning to end. It also gives us a chance that we have yet another touchpoint to connect on literature between both schools, a communal story, a way to come out with your family and see a story, but also with your classroom. And then everyone can experience it, and they say, another point for the whole class to immediately connect with, whether we're online, and you've had that experience where you said, oh, remember when we were on the story walk? And it also, the books that were chosen support arcs in our Lucy Cockens units, and it connects there. It also matches district goals, particularly like the book Be You, and it connects with our social, emotional learning. And so it gives teachers' classrooms a great point on different stories, not only to be outside, but just to have the books that make us all a better community. It's another touchpoint. And it's also in a time, even before the pandemic, when we need to expand our literacy connections in as many ways as we can. I cannot thank Julie enough, Julie, Mrs. Dermis, you know, putting this together between both schools in the great organization. And thank you very much, Katie, and the NEED grant for this support. I love the books, and I'm excited about it. And I remember my first story walk was in the winter, and we came back and had hot chocolate after my family did that. And I am a reading specialist. My dad worked at a library, and every bit of it paid.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And then the other one was sensory supports for inclusion students?
Thank you, NEED, also for supporting our grant. I collaborated with LGN also on getting sensory grants and supports for our students. So this is reaching about 60 students across both elementary schools, K to 3. And a good portion of some of the supports we got were multi-sensory tools for using within the Orton-Gillingham program. So sand to trace letters in, as well as screens to put under your writing to trace over while you're learning different sounds. And then Danielle will talk about some of the other supports we got.
We also got bands that go on the chairs for students when they're a little bit more active that need that release of energy. It's a way to have them be a little bit more calmer in their spaces, along with wiggle seats that you can sit on or wobble chairs. So they're moving around that flexible seating, in a sense, to give students now, even within this pandemic era, that they can still have that flexible seating. They're cleanable, they're washable. And we also got a couple of standing desks, one for each school, which is really great for those students who really just need to stand when they're working, able to wash it down, clean it. It's been great in my classroom. I've used it a couple of times with some students already, and it's been fabulous to have it, to be able to say, hey, go stand up for a minute and work on your work back there. They really appreciate that idea of having a different place, a different movement that they can go to. And it's on wheels, so it could move to a classroom if we needed to put it into a regular classroom for a student that is particularly in need. These items are going to be really handy to all the students that they're going to affect in the next, you know, this year. I can't wait to get more of these things in so we can continue using them. But thank you so much, NEED. It was really appreciative that we were able to have this opportunity to expand what we have for our sensory kids and those types of things right now.
Yes, thank you.
I'm so happy. That's like why we work all year, fundraising and being in people's faces and give us money and buy this and do this. And like, that's just, we give it away. That's the fun part. So thank you for applying. If any teachers are watching, we're doing another grant cycle in January. Because I'm a teacher, I get it. If you're like, ah, and you couldn't make the deadline for the fall, I couldn't apply for a grant right now. So keep thinking, how can we help you? We have more money, and we'd love to give it to you. So another deadline in January coming your way. And thank you to the school committee for having us on tonight and getting to spread this exciting news.
So Katie, thank you so much. I think we all recognize that we really couldn't achieve all of the really creative and supportive ways that children in our schools are cared for without needs, financial support. So we really appreciate it. We are so grateful. Is there any other comments?
I just wanted to note, if I may, Madame Chair, through you, to Ms. Conway and the entire NEED organization that puts this together. I just wanted to note, if if I may, Madam Chair, through you to to Ms. Conway and the entire Need Organization that that puts this together. It it's there, it's, you know, we're, you know, Kate was kind of laughing about, you know, being in your face and fundraising, but. Truly, it's a, it's a blessing for Norton Public Schools to have these grants available to our teachers and I and I appreciate what she said, that it's, it was a, it's a difficult fall because of everything that's going on. But here we go again, right? They're already announcing we're coming out in January, so. I guess they're going to be in a lot of people's faces uh over the next few weeks in order to continue to fundraise. And I appreciate, I appreciate their work very much, and I appreciate the staff taking the time to think about how to approach uh groups of students in a different way and providing them. Um, the opportunity to uh to look at at things from a different angle or to provide a different activity. So. Again, it's it's what makes, it's what makes uh Lancer Nation such a special place. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I should have made a comment earlier. So. Um, if the students who receive their awards would like to leave, I'm sure that they're all busy. Um, feel free. You do not have to stay on the call. Also, um, Kate, we really appreciate you joining us on behalf of Need, but we understand if you want to leave and also our teachers as well. So. Thanks, everybody. Um, we really appreciate your time with us. So we are going to move on to Kathleen. You have an update for us.
Yeah, so um, of course, with the pandemic this year, our conference was canceled. Um, but what they did instead was they had a guest speaker. Um, and I spelled her name wrong, so I want to correct that first. Um, her last name was uh Warum. It, but it was W O, oh, now I've lost the, W O R N U M and actually, um. So I apologize for that, but that's what happens when you watch it on your phone, I guess. Um, as always, it was really good. Um, you go into something thinking you know. What the topic is going to be about and you feel like you've got a total grasp of it and within five minutes you realize that you really don't. Um, she talked about um equality versus equity and 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 that's something that actually came up this summer to us. Um, and I think that we've. Taken the bull by the horns and and uh implemented some programs. Um, so that makes, that that made me proud going into this, that we've already taken the steps to fix it. Um, one thing that she mentioned and and the school committee members have the report that I did, but just the highlights. Um, that every, that that the definition of equity is that every child receives what they need to develop their full academic and social. Uh, potential to thrive every day. So that doesn't mean that each child gets a pencil, each child gets a piece of paper. And they're expected to do their work because that might not work for both children. Uh, and and one of the things, I'll hold this one up. I know everybody got this, but this is what, I hope you can see it. That's what really hit home to me was that equality doesn't mean equity and and we need to treat things differently with that. Um, she also mentioned that part of of teaching that is to make sure that you know your kids. And that brought home to me something that Kent Taylor had said during graduation when he still had a letter from one of his kids because he learned. About them before he even started teaching. Um, she went so far as to say, don't even write your lesson plan until you know the kids in front of you. I mean, I think that would be. Much too difficult. Um, you have to have something in place at least, but. I I liked how she said the first week or so, and I think Dr. Byetta, you've mentioned this before. You want the first week to be totally about learning about the kids in front of you because everybody works differently. Everybody learns differently. Um, they talked about different cultures, uh, what what is acceptable in one culture might not be in another. Um, you might have somebody that hangs back because of their cultural background. Um, they wait to actually be acknowledged. They might not raise their hand. So those are things that we have to learn about the students in front of us. Um, and in order to make sure that our district is full of proficient teachers for the equity. Um, is about self-reflection, study your students, the ability and willingness to have difficult conversations. Um, articulate and live the vision and maintaining essential elements. And I think all of those are things that we pretty much have in our handbooks and everything anyway, or. So I just think it's something that we need to focus on a little more. Um, the last thing that she talked about, which I'm hoping I can share my screen. I've never done this before, so fingers crossed. Let's see if this works. Um, one thing she talked about was microaggressions. I'd never heard that term before and I wasn't really sure what it meant. Um, basically what it is, is when somebody says something without intent to hurt you, but it does for whatever reason. Um, one thing that I found is that even when kids go to say, hey, you know, this was said to me and, you know. The response sometimes might be, well, they didn't mean it. It's okay, you know, and but that's not the point. The point is that somebody said something. That hurt somebody and it needs to be addressed. Um, it could be verbal, it could be a slight or a snub or anything, it, but it's deep in our subconscious, so we don't even realize we're doing it. Um, so I'm going to share this because this was something I thought, hopefully, I'm going to share it. Um, so let me see, I'm gonna. Alright, so share screen. Oh, I can't. It says host disabled participating sharing screens, so I can't do it.
I think it's something in the initial setup of the meetings. I'll have to check with.
Oh, alright. Bye. I don't think, it's not working, right? You don't see it?
I don't see anything.
Okay, yep, never mind. Okay, well. Let me get back here. Um, basically, some of the, so um, if anybody wants to look at it, it's YouTube, um, it's Dove, it's done by Dove and it's called um. Microaggression in the, in the teenager's voice. Um, it's any form of intent unintended discrimination. Um, some of the things that the kids say were, were, you don't act black. Can I touch your hair? You're pretty in an exotic way. Um, but you sound white. Uh, you're lucky there's affirmative action. Um, you don't dress ghetto. So I mean, some of them, obviously, you realize is something you shouldn't say, but some of them. You know, kids might not think of it that way, but but they're hurting someone's feelings by saying them. Um. And they said microaggression um were significantly significantly associated with anxiety and binge drinking. So that was something that kind of stuck to me. You know, if there's some way that we can, you know, step in on that, then that's something um that absolutely should be done. I think as far as um our point as educators is we need to be more aware of it so that we aren't the ones saying, oh, they didn't mean anything by it, just say you're sorry, you know. Educating where that came from, from the beginning, as opposed to just sweeping it under the rug. Um, some of the things that they said was, oh, it was just a joke, but my best friend's Hispanic, so I don't have a problem with it. Um, you're being overdramatic, get over it. So those are all things that I think we need to take out of our vocabulary so that. You know, we're giving validation to the person's feelings that that were hurt. Um, and after that, I, like I said, I think we're doing a really good job. I think that we have, it's come to our attention. We have put in some programs. I know Vinnie, you. Might want to speak to it because I know you sent us some things um in the beginning of the school year that that were done. I'm not sure who was on your team, but um overall, I think it was again, uh, good because. A, we were already addressing it, but B, I think there's things that we can learn from it. So that was it.
Thanks, Kathleen. I think it's um really refreshing sometimes when we sit in on those meetings, um, when we have the opportunity. To sit on on those meetings and really kind of be able to see all of the good things that are happening in Norton. Um, really sort of having those conversations, having people um at the table who really are proactively. Addressing kind of need and in continued um growth within our district. So thanks for that update. Vinnie, did you want to add anything?
No, I was just gonna um, you know, briefly say we, we have begun work. Um, there's a lot of work still due, but we've worked with Wheaton College. We're, we're exploring some options with. Um, some folks out of uh, actually, the Rhode Island College. Um, our administrative staff is. Has begun this work and now we're going to be moving it. Uh, we have plans to move it forward to do that same kind of work with our teaching staff. Um, we've had some seminars uh at the middle school uh. What, two years ago now or a year and a half ago. Um, so we are, you know, we're moving in that direction. There's still work to be done. I think it very much ties in with a lot of our SEL work, um, our trauma work. Um, you know, this isn't something in isolation. It's all part of things that we're doing across the board um in in each of the uh buildings and then at the district level. I just wanted to remind the committee as well that um we have a cultural proficiency task force that starts its work on December eighth. At six thirty. It is, it's the first time since I've been in Norton when I asked for parent volunteers. That I had so many parents want to be on it that we've actually created a parent. Committee on this topic. It's kind of like an advisory board to the task force to allow for them. Because I mean, we had over twenty parents apply to be in the group and that's, that speaks volumes to this being a topic that's important to the. To the school community and the community at large. So uh, we, we randomly select, selected some folks. To be on the task force, but then I also announced that we wanted to have a parent advisory, somebody that would be directly involved with me. On things that they're hearing, they're seeing, um, that uh would allow for the task force to try to take these challenges. Um, and then lastly, the administrative team, we started with our own training this summer with professional development. Um, and we're currently reading uh White for Jitterly with um, with the entire administration and then our plan is to move. Those types of tasks with our, our staff. Um, I think there's a lot going on right now and we're trying to. Um, create a sense of uh excitement about about learning about topics instead of yet another, another initiative, if you will. Um, this is not an initiative. Um, this is something that um is going to be constantly and ongoing for us, very much like a curriculum pieces. There'll never be a task group, task force report that doesn't say something to the effects that we're continuously working on this topic. But I think we need to find um where our data is in terms of our community, in terms of our school community diversity, where we can get that data. Um, and then be able to um look at our curriculum and see how diverse we are. I was at the uh. The statewide commission meeting yesterday where we were talking about um the, the issues around suicide that we're seeing within our school communities. Um, as we know, we had a, a situation nearby just this past month um with a ninth grade student. Um, this is something that hits home with everybody, but all of these topic, topics for us in Norton. Are really under our whole social emotional umbrella. Um, they, we believe that they belong there, you know, strong heart, strong mind. Um, you know, kind of philosophy, if you will, making the right choices. So. Um, we're not perfect, we're not even close to there, but we are definitely a wheel that's moving in the right direction. So thank you to the work. And uh, and Kathleen, thank you for bringing uh attending and then bringing this topic. As a forefront issue from the school committee as well, because I think it's important for the community to recognize that the five of you guys are on board with us about this topic.
If anyone's interested, it is um on YouTube, teenagers discuss microaggression and races, racism, and then it's hashtag hatch kids, H A T H kids. Uh, it's done by uh Dove, Dove um products have um sponsored it.
Thanks, Kathleen. Thanks, everyone. Um, we are going to move on. Vinnie, you are going to um talk us through the second reading and vote to approve the revised policies?
So uh, absolutely, we've um, as you, as you guys know, last week you, uh, our last meeting, you looked at the three areas. Um, that we needed to adjust um our enrollment strategies and enrollment requirements for. Students that are experiencing homelessness, students that are in DCF care, and then uh students that uh. Family members are active military. So um, you know, we did, we did that the last time, so hopefully we, if anybody has any questions, I can answer them. Um, if not, we're gonna um get that out to to Desi as part of our uh desk review around that topic.
And if I'm not mistaken, Vinnie, the changes that were made were mandated. Is that correct?
Yes, yep.
So there really isn't.
They're all part of the requirements, um, regarding that, that particular topic of educational stability for those populations.
Right, so um, I don't have any questions or comments. Does anybody else? It looks like we don't have any. So do we, um, Dr. Byetta, vote on each one separately or can we vote on all three um as presented?
Sorry about that. Um, you have to vote on each one separately as a policy.
Okay, sounds good. So is there a motion to approve the policy as written? Um, for homeless students enrollment rights and services?
So moved.
Second, all in favor? Sherry?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
And Carolyn is a yes. Is there a motion to approve the educational opportunities for military children policy as revised?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Um, all in favor? Sherry?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And I am a yeah. And then finally, is there a motion to approve the educational opportunities for children in foster care? Policy? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Sherry?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And I am a yeah. Thanks, Vinnie, for doing that.
Thank you, everyone.
And then Dr. Byetta will turn it over to you. Vote to approve the school physician contract for twenty twenty one.
So uh, beating the dead horse, as you know, you appoint the superintendent of schools, you appoint um on the recommendation, everybody else, but you have two other places where you actually. Uh, one other place where you actually control whoever you want to hire, and one of them is actually the school physician. Uh, the school physician in this particular case is Dr. Lisa Cannon. Um, Dr. Cannon is out of uh the Mansfield office. Um, she has, I've actually spoken to her twice this year during the COVID situation, asking for her advice. Um, she absolutely returns her phone calls. Um, she's available to us and um she's uh highly educated and and really easy to get to. So. We're recommending that she continue as our um, as our yearly um appointment. Um, for our school nurses to support and especially during COVID. Um, you know, it's a, it's a two thousand dollar um. Payment um once a year. It's, it's, it's not a lot of money and during COVID, it's been, you know, a lot more work than than it usually is. So I'm recommending that you consider. The appointment or the uh, the contract.
Great, thank you. Any comments or questions? Seeing none. Um, so is there a motion to approve the school physician contract for twenty twenty one stated? Um, Dr. Cannon, is that, just looking at my.
Yes.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Um, Dan?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Thank you. Um, Dr. Byetta, any other business?
Really quickly, um, for the purposes of the committee, as you know, athletics through the M I double A is a continuing um movement. Um, I'd like to establish getting the fees done. Um, this did come in after the posting because the M I double A and then the, the TVL made their. Final recommendations and decisions um on Tuesday and it was too late for me to post it, but. Um, we're recommending through the business office from Matt as well as Aaron Sumner. Um, that all sports except for hockey for the fall be set at two hundred dollars. Fee and that. I'm sorry, winter. Um, that also went to sports be at two hundred dollars except for hockey, which would be at three fifty. This is a reduction from three fifty to two hundred and from five fifty to three fifty. Um, so that's our recommendation. Um, going forward for your consideration, it does require um a vote.
I, I have a, is hockey happening?
The answer to that is yes. Right now, the M I double A has come out with some significant uh rule changes and requirements. Um, everything from participation um to how it happens, uh, you name it. They've come up with some, some pretty specific rules and regulations around it all. Um, our costs in the wintertime are always a little bit more anyways because we utilize um indoor facilities that we don't have, such as Wheaton College and the, the. Um, the hockey rink and all of that. So for swimming and indoor track is two examples and then third party gymnastics. Um, so for us right now, um, you know, it's a little bit more, but as you crunch the numbers and you, and you see everything for the rest of the year. It's still, still puts it at a slight positive in that bottom number. Um, and that's after taking into account, you know, the, the student that can't afford it and all those things that we typically do. So. It is a pretty significant reduction. Um, they're also playing less of a season, as many of you know, less practices. Um, everybody's trying to stay safe and then if we have to consider any changes, we'd have to do it later. If in fact, we close and go full remote. Remote or any of that stuff and hopefully we don't have to think about that.
Congratulations, Sherry. Thank you.
Really great news for our student athletes. I think that um we all recognize. That sports is really um an important part of students' academic careers. Um, Dr. Byetta, can you just confirm? Are, i- is there still going to be sort of a, a winter two that happens in the spring? I mean, would, I forget what it was called, but. I mean, what, I forget what it was called, but
Yeah.
So what sports are kind of being put on hold until the spring from the winter season?
So, so from the fall and now the winter, you're going to add wrestling to that, to that list. Chair and football from the fall and volleyball, which was a Tri-Valley League decision to move to that, I believe it's called Fall Two season.
Is it that was called Fall Two? Okay.
The TVL on volleyball made its own decision. That was different from other areas, which is fine, I'm not being critical of the decision, I'm just saying it was different. And so now we have that season, that's a smaller season, if you will, tucked in. And, you know, it's all going to depend on the outcome of what's taking place around us, as we all know. But right now, it's an opportunity to continue with our student athletes being able to participate at the high school level. It is a, a season that's cut pretty significantly, just like they did in the fall and different, the rules are like crazy changes, but that's where we are.
Great, thank you. Is there any other questions or comments? Sherry, did you have anything? So we need to vote, can you just refresh my memory? You said
But this would be
Except hockey.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion for you, so it reads clear. The, the recommendation of use of fees for the winter season is for $200 for basketball, swimming and gymnastics, and a recommendation of hockey at 350.
Joe, can you clarify something for me?
Yes.
Well, I absolutely think we have to do this. Are we allowed to vote on something that wasn't on the agenda?
Yes, we are. If it comes in after the posting and we're trying to meet a deadline of getting information out to parents.
Okay.
So in this particular case, the impact of, of the vote has a direct impact on our families, and I did not have this information available because we were waiting for the final MIAA and then TVL recommendations. Then we had to crush the numbers, and that's the reason why, literally, we didn't get this done until the date is Wednesday mid-afternoon by the time 10:21 it came in to me, and it was afternoon time that I made the recommendation. So it was after the posting.
It's not, we're not breaking any laws.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot different, too, because we're, you know, Aaron was waiting on the ranks and the, you know, gymnastics, that he was waiting on those guys to give out their estimates for, for rentals, so.
Part of the reason, and it's a great question, Dinesh, part of the reason is we were anticipating that everything was going to be moved to after, later into December and even into the January 4th weekend, that's not what happened.
All right, well, there's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, Dan?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Thank you. Any other?
Yes, please. Madam Chair, through you and the committee and the public that's still available, there has been communication, communication that has gone out to the grade two at the JCS. Again, the Somnies grade two classes will be remote tomorrow. That means actually that both Cohort One and Two are on remote for the day. And the rationale for that, so that we have this in the public, is we have a symptomatic situation with an employee that has caused close contact with other employees, therefore impacting the classrooms. The students are not impacted at all, they are not considered close contacts at this time. So by going to remote, we just don't have staff for tomorrow. We've been looking for, I believe it's either five, it's five to seven staff members in one building. So this allows for us to have a remote day with those students. It's directly in that situation in grade two only in that particular school. So I just wanted to make that as an announcement. The second is, we have a Norton Middle School, in Norton High School, two cases, one in each school. As of today, both positive cases that also have contact tracing, but have limited contact tracing that's been completed. I also would like to go on a motion that happened prior to Thanksgiving. Prior to Thanksgiving, as far back as the Friday before Thanksgiving, we had the potential of a symptomatic situation at Norton Middle School, which then caused a contact tracing situation, which then caused other folks to potentially be tested. However, in that contact tracing, we also had employees who on themselves decided that they were not going to take a risk at all and consider themselves to go get tested. Those employees, both were not symptomatic, both tested negative, and both returned to work. That's the process. One of the biggest issues that's taking place is that everybody wants to know everybody's situation. I remind the public that student information and employee information around individual health is a private matter. Our job within the public domain is to provide you general information around the safety issues that we're implementing and/or the requirements that we are implementing as part of opening a school, opening a classroom, closing a classroom, so on and so on and so, so on. Unfortunately, whatever we say is going to be questioned by somebody somewhere. Absolutely, that's part of, of the world that we're in. But I am concerned, I am very concerned that folks utilize this as platforms for other things. This, to me, has never been and will never be a red, white, blue issue that's on Fox News on CNN. I think I've said that pretty clearly to everybody. I take the safety of the students of Norton Public Schools, including my own child, and the staff of Norton Public Schools, including my own spouse incredibly seriously when I make decisions. I don't make them lightly. I don't make them without talking to every official that should have input on that final decision. I, I communicate with the school committee. I take your advice on situations. I call the Norton Board of Health. I self-report, as I will tomorrow, on the situation at the high school and middle school, because there, there's student situations, I have to report those, I'm obligated to report those to Desi. So they'll have now a total of four reports from us. And by four reports, I don't mean four people, I mean four reports. And that information is shared and, and is available. What's not available, and what we've tried to stay away from, is talking about one employee or one student, or one grade that targets, you know, one person and so on and so forth. We try to stay within the generalizations as much as possible for the safety of everyone involved, and we've changed some of those protocols. We've also are currently working on the potential that there are more different protocols coming from the CDC to the Mass Department of Public Health, then to the local level, and then through Desi and the local level to us. And that is the change that they've already made that was implemented, which was after eight days, if you're contact tracing, after the eighth day, you can go get a test, and if you test negative, you can come in on day 10. That's going to change again. We haven't implemented that change because we are not there yet. We haven't been ordered to make that change. When we look at contact tracing, it's clearly defined as within six feet for 15 cumulative minutes. That is a self-reporting process that takes place. Yes, it is on the honor system, in the same way that we ask our parents and our staff with everything else, if you're not feeling well, you know, please call your child in sick, don't send them to school if they have a slight fever or any of those things. I'm deeply concerned about attendance, you know, for students. We've had a lot of discussions internally about that, and students that are, if you will, not actively as engaged as they should be, we're having a ton of internal discussions about doing that, and I hope after the first of the year to come back with some thoughts on, on how to do that. But we've got to turn this boiling hot water down a little bit as a, as a district. Everything around us is boiling up, another six, over 6,000 cases today in Massachusetts. This is the second highest number. You know, we didn't see these numbers in, in March, April, and May and June at all. So we have to continue to, to plug forward, to move forward, to do good things for each other, in my opinion, and to do good things for children, for our students, and to be safe and to do it in a safe way. We are, in my opinion, and I'm not a medical doctor, seeing a spike if we have numbers of over four, five, and 6,000 people being reported out daily. But what we're seeing in our schools right now isn't the definition of that same spike. But that's what some people want to do, is put those things together and say that they are. We are getting through contact tracing, almost every situation through contact tracing is coming back negative. And by almost, I mean almost, not all, but almost, and I hope to be able to share some data on that as, as we collected. So I think it's just, and I know I'm beating a horse here, but I think it's just really important for us to turn the knob down a little bit about where we are. I, I respect and understand that everybody is nervous. I respect that everybody is irritated, and I respect and understand that both parents and staff and students are worried about the future. But we have to do this day by day. We don't, we, we can't think two weeks out and three weeks out, because we don't know where we're going to be two weeks out. We could be closed next week. We could be closed. And one of the considerations that I'm thinking is that we really do think about what's happening between now and the holiday break, and what should we do after the holiday break? Should we do something different? And there's a lot of superintendents having that discussion right now, and I hope to bring some of those ideas to you in the near future. But I really do hope that people understand that the decision-making process is grounded on facts and information and the expert in the fields that provide us the support to make those decisions. And then there are singleton decisions made by people around their level of, am I a contact? Am I symptomatic? Am I positive? I'm not, I didn't, I wasn't, and we have to trust those decisions. And that's where we are as of tonight and moving forward. Lastly, when we look at teaching and learning, I'm telling you, when, when I walk around our, our schools, I was, as you know, physically spent a couple of hours each day down at the middle school, except for today. And then I was at the LG coming back from somewhere else and decided to pop in there for a little over an hour. There's great things happening in our schools, and I got to find a way, as Vinnie Cersei said earlier at a meeting that we are having, we've got to find a way to communicate the positives within our school climates. We have to find a way to talk about as collectively about the positive things that are happening amongst us, between us, and for kids in our schools. And it's my job to try to figure that out over the next few hours and days and come up with a plan to try to see if we can find ways to celebrate and, and, and be positive while understanding and being clear that there are many negative things taking place around us and the world on a daily basis. So I'll leave you with that.
That was a lot to digest. I think one of the things that we probably can all recognize is, you know, human nature is that we kind of do, I think, look at the negatives a little bit more closely, right? Because that's what really affects us. And I think in, in some ways, living through a pandemic has been really challenging probably for everybody. But I think, again, kind of what Kathleen had shared is everybody's a little bit different, right? So how we view things is, is just a, a personal lens. But I think that what I have appreciated, Dr. Bayetta, is it we do get communications, you are always sort of updating us via email or as the chairperson of the school committee, I get a phone call or a text, something that really sort of very quickly shares information. And I think what has, what I have observed and noticed is the amount of complexity when making decisions, because COVID has proven itself to be really difficult to manage, that there's so many different rules and regulations that need to be followed and thought about. And the fact that you have used the support of others, including the Board of Health, including the doctor who oversees Norton Public Schools, I think that, and, and also having conversations with many people, I think that I've appreciated the, the difficulty that it has taken and that sometimes, you know, for your choice to kind of go remote for the JCS classrooms tomorrow, I think you and I talked earlier today, I think that that really is erring on the side of caution. And I think that as a parent, I don't have a second grader, but as a parent, I would appreciate that, just being really careful and really safe for all parties involved, staff and students. So, thank you. Did anybody else have comments?
Carolyn, can I just really quickly kind of play off of what you were just saying?
Sure.
And, and Joe, for clarity, the, the individual of the JCS who was symptomatic is actually not tested positive, they're simply symptomatic, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I, I think it's, that's an important distinction, I think, for people to realize that this is, this is a cautionary move, it is not a, a move in, in reaction to somebody who has COVID, they are simply symptomatic, meaning they show signs. It could be flu, it could be cold, it could be allergies, who knows?
Thanks for sort of clarifying that. I sort of clarified that myself. I think I, I, I think that we just have to continue to sort of forge forward, right? And I do hope that everybody's making really, you know, good decisions for themselves, for others, really kind of taking this seriously. If, if you don't feel well, don't come to school. I do really, like I said, I mean, I really do appreciate the, the kind of caution that is being sort of thought about and taken within our schools districts. So there is a question about the dashboard. I know that we have gotten information about the dashboard that was being created just when it was going live.
Yeah, so we, we have put it in for a second discussion with our Wellness Committee, as you know, consists of, of myself and our nurses. Our nurses are doing some research, they have some questions on the factual information being provided. So we'll get back to you, but it's, it's, it's truly just they're trying to make sure that there's the right decision around factual information that would be posted there. So we are looking at a number of other school district sites, and our head nurse is making those phone calls to those districts nurses about how they went about doing that, so that when we do go live, it's actual, as concrete information as possible. So that's the reason why that's happened.
And who's going to be updating that?
That will come, that will come, that'll come through the school nurses to the communications office, and the communications office will verify and place it on there.
Great, thank you. Any other comments or questions, Sherry?
I just want to mention, Joe, you were talking about, you know, finding ways to, to be positive and, you know, for our students and that kind of stuff. So I do just want to mention, I follow a lot of our teachers on Twitter, as, as well as yourself, I follow. And some of the things that our teachers are doing are just awesome, what they're getting out there into the public and, you know, interviewing kids and showing kids at recess, and it really kind of shows that they're trying to maintain some sort of normalcy for our students in this crazy world. So I think, I, I just wanted to, you know, of course, shout out to our teachers for not only doing the job that they're doing, but for getting it out there on Twitter, so people can really see, you know, what, what's happening and how somewhat of these kids' daily lives in the school is somewhat normal for them. I think that's important.
And to sort of, kind of go off of that, Sherry, I, as a sort of non-social media person, I, I don't do Twitter, I no longer do Facebook, so I don't really see any of that, and I don't know, Dr. Bayetta, if there is a way for those of us who are not on kind of social media outlets to, to maybe recognize that, maybe ask some of our teachers to maybe join our meetings to kind of talk about some of the great things that are happening. I know that we have our student representatives who do a lovely job kind of giving to kind of talk about some of the great things that are happening. I know that we have our student representatives who do a lovely job, kind of giving us updates about events and about what's happening in schools, but maybe allowing our teachers to also be part of our conversations to really kind of represent all of the good things that are happening or continue to happen.
I think there's two approaches. Number one, we are always, and we'll absolutely, I'll do it through Jen's office because it's curriculum instruction to, to see which teachers would like to come forward on every school committee meeting attempt to have them come in, maybe put them towards the top so that way they don't have to stay for the second meeting. And then I think Karen, who can give us a little light into social media and how we can maybe make that connection.
Thank you. I just wanted to let you know of a pilot that we're going to be starting in January that is going to, because we are well aware that we have a lot of people in the, the Norton community, a lot of families that are not on social media. We're going to be piloting a communications platform that pulls in the social media posts as well as it'll be a place, if I have children at, say, the middle school and the Yale School and the JCS, I can get all of that information in one place. So we're trying to really streamline that for families. And then it will offer, you know, the good things that are happening in the schools. The, the principals will be able to send out notifications. You know, a place to include their newsletters and such. We're trying to really keep it all in one place. So that will be a pilot launched in January.
It sounds great, Karen. Thank you.
And Karen, what's, what's social media? What is that?
He's been, he's been in his dungeon for so long.
He doesn't know how to use InstaFace.
Is that like email?
I'm going to call him Ben for Benjamins from now on. Show me the Benjamins.
Karen, I wonder in, in this pilot, if it's something that if you could take some of the tweets that the teachers do and almost put them into like some kind of a video, if something like that is what you're talking about with the pilot that you're doing?
Perhaps we can look into it and see if we can do a collection. It's, it's really more tying like the school-based, like the principal's accounts to one place. So if the principal were to, you know, put something out on a Facebook page and a Twitter account, it would also be put on this particular platform.
And the platform is a social media or it's a website?
No, what it is, it's, it's a communication. So think about like the Blackboard Connect where we send a lot of notifications out. It is that, but much more robust.
Okay. I was just thinking that if there was some kind of a video, it might be nice too, because I'll tell you, on some days that, you know, it's, it's really tough to put a smile on your face when you go on Twitter and see some of these posts and, and, you know, what these kids are doing with their teachers, it really can, you know, change the direction of your day and put a smile on your face. So I think that the more we can kind of share that is really important for not only, you know, our teachers to be recognized for what they're doing, but also for the parents.
Absolutely.
And, and hopefully it will kind of remind people to, to try to just, you know, continue to do your best at, you know, maintaining social distance and mask and hand washing so that we can keep our kids in school as long as possible. That is just so important for our students.
Well, thanks, everybody. Any other comments? Anything else, Dr. Beata?
No, COVID-19 situation right now is a constant changing, daily, hourly, minute. I'm currently working on, on other issues as we're in this school committee, not new issues, but trying to clarify and getting further information out to families. So I would anticipate some type of a message from the superintendent with just clarification on information as, as needed. I think one of the things we're going to do is I'll meet with my team tomorrow, but at some point consider what I would call maybe daily messages from the superintendent's office to the communications office. Not necessarily with, you know, numbers per se, because they can always go to the dashboard once and if that becomes live. But maybe just statements of fact about what we know and don't know. People can read those in any direction that they like, but it, it'll be based on what we know.
I think the dashboard is going to be really helpful. I mean, I think we all, or, or at least I'll speak for myself. I think knowledge is power and I think the more we can kind of communicate, the more we can become partners with our, you know, families in our community. I think that we'll just sort of be able to have strength and kind of moving forward. This has not been easy. This has clearly been a challenge for all parties involved, for our staff, for our students, for our families, for ourselves. So I think we're all kind of, you know, in this crazy time together. And I think just the more information we can kind of share amongst each other, I think just really helps to really, well, to, to kind of feel more comfortable with that.
Norton Media Center is also on, you know, our call right now. Maybe they're partner with Karen to, to help with maybe some of these projects, if it's something they may want to, you know.
It's a great point, Sherry.
You know, maybe they could help us in, in kind of getting some videos together using YouTube so that we could put, you know, attach those to, you know, Dr. Beata's emails that he sends out or, you know, put up on our websites, just a thought. If they're willing.
Absolutely.
It's a great idea. All right. I think that that's it unless anybody else has any last minute comments. Everybody's good? Seeing none? So is there a motion to end the Norton School Committee meeting for this evening? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Dinesh?
Yes.
Dan? Sherry?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
And Carolyn is a yes. Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Good night, guys.